Live from downtown Fresno at the C-Max Studio, it's the Fresno City Council District 4 Forum. Good evening, I'm David Taub, Senior Reporter with GV Wire. For the next hour or so, we'll chat with the two men. One of them will be the next councilman to succeed, Paul Capriolio, who's termed out in January. Two men qualified to be on the ballot, and they're both with us in studio tonight to represent the area that roughly encompasses east-central Fresno. So let's meet them. First, we have the Public Safety Director for Councilman Nelson Sparza, Tyler Maxwell.
Thank you, David.
And next to him is the Director of Community Relations for the Cagliari family of companies, Nathan Alonso.
Happy to be here, David.
All right, Tyler, let's start with you. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Absolutely. My name's Tyler Maxwell. I'm the Public Safety Director for Councilmember Sparza at City Hall. One of the first things I tell people is that I am extremely proud to have District 4 roots. My family has lived in Fresno City Council District 4 for nearly 60 years, going back to my great-grandparents. It's where my parents were raised, it's where I was raised. Went to church, went to local parks, karate lessons. It's where I'll raise my children someday. And I'll tell you what, David, we are so proud to be from District 4. We love it there. It's a cultural and economic hub for the city of Fresno. We have Fresno State, the airport, Fashion Fair Mall. We're the only city council district to span both north and south of Shaw. But I'll tell you this, we're not the same city council district we were 30 years ago when I was growing up. We need a council member who's going to be attentive to the needs of his district, somebody that's not asleep at the wheel, and somebody that has real experience and is going to deliver that so he's ready to work on day one at City Hall.
Right, Nathan, tell us a little bit about your background.
Well, first of all, David, thanks for hosting this forum that'll give folks some information about who's running. My name is Nathan Alonso, and I'm proud to be running for Fresno City Council District 4. I'm the youngest son of Mexican farmworkers. When I was growing up, I was a farmworker too. That's how I put myself through school, at Fresno City College and then at Fresno State. I was lucky enough to be able to have an education. And then after I was done with my degree, I stayed. And I am a Fresnoan and a District 4 resident by choice. I have lived here in our district. And I see every day the challenges that our families have to see and the things that they have to experience. And I'm anxious to get to work and helping to address some of these issues. We are a diverse district, and that's what makes us one of the strongest districts in the city. We are ethnically and economically diverse. And we have limitless opportunity when it comes to creating jobs, when it comes to addressing our homeless issue, when it comes to making sure that we are doing what we have to do as a council member in order to keep our constituents safe and help them thrive. The future of our city for the next generation is going to be contingent upon the decisions that we make in the next four years. That's why I'm stepping in and using a career of diverse experience in the public, private, and nonprofit sectors to be able to move our district forward and make sure that the Fresnoans of tomorrow and our children have a brighter, safer, and more prosperous Fresno to be able to grow up in.
Great, and Tyler, you say you're the Public Safety Director. Explain to the people, what does a Public Safety Director do?
So both my boss, Councilmember Sparza, and his opponent, when they ran for the City Council District 7 race, one of the biggest platform issues was public safety because that's what they heard time over time again from their constituents. And what we wanted to do, and what part of my aim on the City Council campaign is, to expand the way people think about what public safety is. Public safety in the city of Fresno is a toolkit. And don't get me wrong, police will always be the biggest tool in that toolkit. But as long as we only invest in a hammer, David, every issue is going to look like a nail. And we know that homelessness is not a nail. Drug and alcohol abuse is not a nail. Mental health illness is not a nail. So we have to expand the way people think about what public safety is. And that's part of my job at City Hall, is to look outside of the box and think of ways to bring the community together and make it safer. We hosted a Beat the Heat Retreat at Romaine Park this last summer over an entire month. And what we did is unprecedented. We saw hundreds of people come out week after week and get together at Romaine Park. They met their local police officers, sheriffs, fire, probation officers. And we formed a sense of community. We've hosted forums at Roosevelt High School where we had folks throughout law enforcement come out and talk to folks in different industries. You know, district attorney, public defender, police probation, and learn a little bit more about how to get involved in those roles. So we have to expand our thinking of what public safety is. It's investing more into our parks. Study after study will show that when we invest more into green space, we see crime, especially juvenile crime in those areas, decrease drastically. It's about infrastructure. 2018 had more vehicular collision-related deaths than we had homicides. And so we really just have to expand our thinking about public safety. That's what I'm doing with Councilmember Sparza. That's what I'll do as a council member for District 4.
And Nathan, I know this is technically a nonpartisan race, but people always ask you, and any candidate who's walking, what political party you're affiliated with. You used to be a registered Republican, now you're no-party preference. Why the switch?
I think that what we need at City Hall is a leader that can get things done. And somebody who can bring people that are Republicans, Democrats, and independents to the table in order to be able to tackle the issues that face our city. Number one, when you look at the people sitting on the dais, they don't have their name followed by a political party. Number two, we need people that can get things done. I'm a person who can get things done, I have a track record of that. It doesn't matter for me whether a person's a Republican or a Democrat, if they are a good, honest person with integrity, if they've got experience, if they've got a strategy for getting things done. That is what we need as far as a representative for our district goes. So that is what I look to be. I am a pragmatic and I am a moderate leader that brings forth solutions that can help people on both sides of the aisle, but more importantly, can help the 80,000 people that live in east-central Fresno. So I'm a thoughtful, pragmatic leader who is looking to make a difference for the people that live in District 4.
And for the record, Tyler, you are a Democrat.
I am a Democrat, registered Democrat, correct.
All right, well, I'm not only the District 4 moderator, I'm also a District 4 resident. And there was a situation in my neighborhood, roughly around Temperance and Shields, in the past couple of months, where there was a land designated in the general plan that when it got annexed into the city, it was supposed to be a neighborhood park. But the city council chose to use that land for market-rate housing. Now, both of you guys are actually on the same page on this one. You'd like to see a park there too. So bringing to my question, what is your plan to build more parks in District 4? And where would they go? Nathan, we'll start with you.
So the first thing that we have to do is look at the condition of our current parks. When we have been going out and talking to our residents over the course of the last year, door-to-door, one of the things that they tell us is, "I'm afraid of going to our existing parks" because there are homeless individuals who are under the influence, who have scattered debris, human waste, needles. People don't feel safe themselves going to the park, and they feel even less safe sending their children to parks. So we have to look at the condition of our parks because parks, homelessness, and public safety are all issues that here in Fresno are hand-in-hand and are tied together. So we don't have the luxury of being able to segregate the issues. Here, what we need to do is take an inventory of our parks and look at what it's going to cost us in order to be able to refurbish current parks. And then also take a land inventory through available acreage and be able to, number one, look at purchasing, but number two, how we can work together with private-public partnerships in order to be able to acquire that land so that it's not as costly to the city. One of the things that we know is that the city is financially strapped. But that's still not an excuse for not being able to have the adequate quality of life amenities that our community deserves. It's not fair for you, David, to have to take your kids to a park in Clovis or have to take them to another regional park in order to let them safely play outside, where you could have sent them across the street and they could have played in what was supposed to be an 11-acre park. I'm committed, David, to looking at other acreage that may be available down the Temperance Corridor, or the Armstrong, or the Fowler Corridor, so that we can look at either purchasing or making arrangements with a property owner or a development entity and being able to enter into an agreement to have a park. What you ended up with was a two-acre park that isn't sufficient for the number of homes that are going in.
And Tyler, what's your plan? Where would you put parks and how would you pay for them in District 4?
East of Fowler Avenue in District 4. We don't have a single city park. We do not have a bus stop. We do not have a fire station. We do not have a police substation. We need more green space east of Fowler Avenue. And we need to take back the green space that already exists throughout the rest of our district. I think what happened on Shields and Temperance is a prime example of our current representation not being in tune with the needs of his district. My opponent pays a lot of lip service to being pro-parks, but one of us was against Measure P and the other one of us was for it. We had a funding method available to us. Unfortunately, there was mistruth spread about what the measure represented. And while it did get a majority of voters in the city of Fresno, it did not pass, which means we have less money to invest into our parks, green space, and into our arts programs locally. Recently, I went on a tour of every single park in our district, David. And I kid you not, at every single one of those parks, I came across one form of a homeless encampment or another. We found syringes in the grass. The bathrooms were in terrible conditions. Half of the water faucets didn't work. People don't feel safe going out to their local parks. It's part of the reason we've lost a sense of community in the city of Fresno. We have over something like $30 million in deferred maintenance to our local parks. We need to start looking at ways to expand our tax base in order to take back our parks and increase green space, not only in District 4, but throughout the city as a whole.
You mentioned Measure P, which did get a majority of voters in 2018, but it needed 2/3, which it did not get.
Correct.
So there could be a successor to Measure P in the November 2020 ballot, whether it's put on there through a petition like it was last time or the city council votes put on there. So for you, what would a Measure P successor look like? What would be something you support? And what is something you think the people could support?
Three things come up with my, the folks who I'm going out and talking to. They want three things, pretty much universally. They want more green space for their children. They want more public safety. But they also don't want excessive taxes. So what I'm going to be looking for is the final language of exactly how much they're going to be taxing on a proposed ballot, how it's going to be split up between police and fire. Our fire department and our police both need a lot of help, and so do our parks. I want to see how they're going to split it. And I want to see what kind of lifespan they put on that.
Well, why don't you suggest some numbers? You know, what would be good for you? The size of the tax and how long it should last and how it gets split?
Based off of my conversations with both police department, fire department, talking with some folks in the parks, we need so many resources. It will not be solved with one simple tax measure on the ballot. There are minds more in tune with the specifics about what is needed in each department. I want to see what they come to the table with. They're more of an expert in those different areas than I am. And I want to see what kind of lifespan they put on it. I think 30 years was a little too long. I'd like to maybe see something a little bit more reasonable. I think something a little bit more digestible for folks to want to sign off on something like that.
And Nathan, what would a Measure P successor look like?
Let's talk about a number of things here, David. Number one, I think my opponent just said that he found that Measure P was unreasonable because it was 30 years wrong. Number two, is he said that I paid lip service. That's categorically and totally false. And here's why. Because when the negotiation for Measure P was happening, I was at the table helping to facilitate it between the Parks Coalition and Public Safety. I was there until the final day when they figured out that they weren't going to be able to go forward together. So while other people are out there posting their opinion on social media to garner likes, I'm at the table negotiating pragmatically and realistically, bringing people together for real solutions. Because Fresno isn't about talking points. Fresno is about details and getting down to the generational issues that have affected our community. So that's why when we talk about what we need going forward, we have to look at what we can do to address parks, public safety, but also our crumbling infrastructure, while being sensitive to the fact that we have one of the most economically disadvantaged districts in the city. We have a large percentage of the people that live in District 4 that are living at or below the poverty line.
Those are specific numbers? You want to see Measure P as the length and how big the tax should be?
So a successor to Measure P would also need to include public safety. We've looked at a length of maybe 15 years. That seems to be something that is palatable to voters and maybe something that is at about half a cent or less than half a cent. It's something that we see that can provide adequate funding, can provide the needed remedies right off the bat to take care of some of the fires that are happening figuratively, but can also accomplish enough over time to where in 15 years, we can feel comfortable going to the voters and saying, "Look what we were able to accomplish in 15 years with the dollars that you gave us." Now, based off of that, do you believe that we have earned your trust to go forward with another 15 years? I think we have to do it in those kind of increments that are pragmatic and can show a baseline of results.
All right, Tyler.
Yes.
Andy Hall officially sworn as police chief last October, but he's going to reach mandatory retirement age in the spring of 2021 when you will be just a few months into your term. There's an idea floating around, I want to get both your opinions on it. Should City Council have a direct say in picking the next police chief?
Absolutely, and I'm proud to have helped spearhead a policy in City Hall where City Council will be more directly involved in the selection of our next police chief. I think a lot of people were blown away when our next police, our current police chief was somebody who didn't even apply to this position. I think Chief Hall is a great guy. I think he has an incredible resume. But as it stands, he didn't apply to this position. We have some incredible internal candidates who were in line, who got passed over. I think a lot of people throughout the city were disappointed to see that all the town halls that were held, the thousands of dollars that were spent selecting a new police chief were completely disregarded in the final hour. So I'm proud to have spearheaded something with District 7 Councilmember Sparza that allows the City Council to be a part of a committee to help select our next police chief.
Nathan, your thoughts?
I think this comes down to leadership, David. We need to have a mayor that engages and is transparent with the City Council. The way that our city charter is set up and the way that our city government is set up, the mayor acts as the CEO of the organization, but council acts as a check and balance and we pass or fail the budget. So a good mayor and a good leader will ask, and they will take opinions from the council and from the community in order to be able to govern and to make decisions in a responsible way. So I would expect that whoever the next mayor of Fresno is going to be, I'm going to have a great relationship with them. And they'll be able to talk to me about who they're looking at as far as the next police chief is and what they believe is best for the community. And I can share my opinions on that as well. Andy Hall is somebody who didn't apply to the job. But Andy Hall is somebody who has stepped up and has decided to very thoughtfully, compassionately, and bravely serve the city of Fresno. Somebody who's been with our department since he was a cadet at the age of 18. And I think that he's going to make some needed changes at the department. I think he's currently making those changes. And he's trying to do the best that he can in the two and a half years that he's going to be there. But going back to your question, we need a mayor who is going to be transparent with us. We need an ability to give our opinion. But if you want to make the big decisions, you've got to run for mayor. But also, you've got to have an ability to have the relationship with that person to make sure that your opinion gets translated into what the final decision's going to be. And I think that out of both of us, I'm going to be the person who's going to be in that best position going forward when we're looking at who our next police chief's going to be.
All right, Nathan. New safety policy went to effect last week into your possible future office. At City Hall, they have implemented a policy where you have to go through a metal detector and where concealed weapon permit holders will not be allowed to carry their weapons in City Hall. Do you think this policy makes Fresno safer? And do you agree with the CCW policy that's right now in place, put in by City Hall and the administration?
So I have gone through the metal detectors and through the safety protocol a number of times now. And the people that are now armed at City Hall are our police officers and our other safety personnel that go in there. Ultimately, those are the people that we look to in order to keep us safe when we're at City Hall. So I think that as far as security goes, we are as safe today as we were yesterday. And I am confident in the safety protocol catching any possible armed suspects or any dangerous items. But I'm confident that Fresno PD and our security at City Hall is going to be able to keep us and the public safe.
Tyler, are you okay with no CCWs at City Hall?
You know what, David, I think this has to be an all-or-nothing policy. I think right now it provides a good illusion at a sense of security. But to be honest, the only people they're screening are people from the public. I go through the back door every single day at City Hall. Nobody ever makes me go through a metal detector. Nobody ever checks to see what's in my pockets. Same with people who carry purses or bags. So what's preventing those people from bringing a firearm into City Hall? I think it has to be an all-or-nothing. Either everybody is searched, or we open it up to our current, or our former policy where we didn't require folks to go through that screening process.
Now, the biggest part of any city budget is for public safety. And in the 2019 budget, there's about 69% of the general funds, about 51% going to police, 18% going to fire. What is the correct percentage? Or what percentage do you support that goes to public safety from the general fund? And Tyler, we'll start with you.
There is no secret formula, David. It depends year by year what we're dealing with as a city, what the department needs are. I think something that differentiates my opponent and myself is that I think public safety incorporates more than just police. We had, I think, over half of our budget go to the local police department. We do need more officers. That will always be my biggest responsibility as your council member. But we have to think beyond police when it comes to us thinking about public safety. We have to think about better infrastructure. We have to think about investing more into green space. We have to think more into investing into career technical education and workforce development. Because all of those things in the long run play into public safety. So when you say "public safety," David, I think all of those things play into it. I can't give you a magic number right now that would solve all the city's issues.
Nathan?
Well, David, what I can tell you is based off the data that we receive from the city. And that is that violent crime is on the rise. Property theft is on the rise. Assault is on the rise. We have the same number of police officers today, or just slightly more than we did before the recession. We are a significantly bigger city now. We're growing every day. And we simply don't have enough patrol officers for the number of Fresnoans that we have. That is coming to bear with what we're seeing out there. On the fire side, we don't have an adequate number of firefighters. And then we are woefully inadequate when it comes to the brick and mortar and the hard infrastructure in the fire department. You are protecting and patrolling on the fire side a city with the same number of fire stations that you've had for the last 30, 35 years. And you're continuing to grow more and more geographically. You're putting a significant strain on the number of stations that you have now and on the personnel. We have abnormally high incident rates for our firefighters. We have abnormally high number of calls that they respond to for a department its size comparatively around the country. So when I look at public safety, I look at prevention. We need to invest more in prevention and help build a relationship and mend the relationship between the police department and the community. I believe that very strongly.
David, I would just like to point out, the current forum that was hosted here, Chief Dyer ended with saying that crime of all sorts was on the decline. So when I hear my opponent saying it's on the rise, you know, I've got to ask myself, you know, which one of these folks is correct?
Well, but then I've got to ask, is it that reported crime is going down? Because people are cynical. With less police officers responding to calls and with crime becoming more violent, people are stopping and they're not calling in their car break-ins. They're not calling in their breaking and entering. They're not calling in-
I disagree because Fresno has one of the highest reported domestic violence rates throughout the state of California. And we know that's not because folks are experiencing more domestic violence, maybe a little bit more in Fresno, but because people are reporting it on a higher average.
And I would say that that is, the statistics can't lie. The numbers are hard. Go and ask the police department. Go and ask the city of Fresno. And they will show you that crime is on the rise, that the number of incidents that our police officers are responding to is on a rise. But also, the police officers, our police department and our Police Officers Association, that I'm proud to have their support, is going to tell you that the number of folks that aren't calling in anymore because they're getting cynical about response times and the follow-up that they're receiving because of our strained department is going down. People just aren't calling in because they are cynical about the fact that it's taken somebody 10, 12 hours to respond back to them a few days, or they're not responding at all.
Now, in our prior GV Wire forum with the mayoral candidates, both of them said that homelessness, people tell them, is number one issue. I'm sure you're probably hearing the same thing as you guys are walking your campaign. I also asked GV Wire audience to send me some questions via email. And Thomas wants to know, "How do you view the homelessness issue in District 4? What do you see the biggest problem being and what's your solution?" Tyler, we'll start with you.
It's definitely homelessness. There's a lot of top issues, but homelessness takes the case. I think in 2019, our homeless numbers went up 17%. The year prior went up something like 23%. We have a homeless crisis here in the city of Fresno. And I think it's a two-pronged approach. Something I didn't really share before I decided to run for City Council. But I think it's something worth noting is that at a young age, you know, both of my parents experienced different forms of homelessness. I can't tell you how many nights that I spent in a halfway home with one of my folks, couch surfing with a friend, or sleeping on the floor of a relative. I have a personal stake in homelessness, especially in District Number 4. It's a two-pronged approach, David. We have to look at solutions for our current homeless. We have to invest more into shelters. The $3 million we recently received for Heap is helping a little bit. Unfortunately, that's just a three-year deal. We have to look at more long-term solutions. That looks like creating more affordable housing. We have to incentivize more affordable housing here in the city of Fresno. When my parents were finally able to get back on their feet and get a job, they made about minimum wage. You know, they weren't completely broke, but it wasn't enough to make a down payment or a deposit on a house or an apartment. The second part of this is, we really have to focus on young people. Children whose parents were impoverished, or homeless, or addicted to drugs and alcohol. Because if we don't step in, they're going to be next generation's homeless. And so that's why I said we have to invest in things like career technical education and workforce development. Last year, a couple of times, I went to the plumber and pipe fitters hall where they were graduating folks who were recently incarcerated from prison. And they got out, they didn't really have a lot of opportunities. But they went through the apprenticeship program and they were able to get good-paying jobs here in the city of Fresno, which prevented them from ending up on the streets. So we have to focus on affordable housing and shelters, and we have to focus on our youth.
Nathan, the idea of homeless shelters. Would you want a homeless shelter built in District 4? And if so, where would you put it?
So we have to look at putting bed space and shelter space near areas where our population can receive services now. If we geographically spread out where individuals can receive services or treatment, we're going to be in risk of duplicating services or in risk of stretching them to a point where they aren't effective. So I think we need to devote our services geographically near areas where you can put together a wraparound approach and be able to ensure that folks are receiving proper and comprehensive treatment.
Well, I'm sorry, would those areas be like residential areas? Or would you put them in an industrial park? Where would you put them?
So we have to look at what's available. If the areas where available services are now are around residential areas, but we are able to translate that into that area, then that's an option that we have. If where there are current services now in mental health, substance abuse treatment, and other triage services, if that's around an industrial or commercial area, then that's going to be something that we need to explore as well. But we need to cluster it around areas where the homeless can get the most amount of help in one location.
Tyler, real briefly, any particular area you'd want to build these shelters?
Well, David, I disagree. I think right now, most of the shelters are concentrated in Fresno City Council District 3, the downtown Fresno area. That doesn't preclude homeless from being in other parts of the city. I don't care if you're at California and B Street, or Champlain and Perrin. You see homeless throughout our entire city. So I don't think that these homeless shelters should be concentrated in just any one part of our city. I think the folks in central and east Fresno are willing to do our fair share to help ease the burden. the burden, but we want to see an equitable response from the other city council districts to do the same as well.
All right, education question for you guys. District 4 encompasses both the Clovis Unified and Fresno Unified districts. Are you satisfied with the quality of education that they provide, and what can the city do to help achieve all the educational goals that we all want? Nathan, we'll start with you.
Well, the success of the city of Fresno is contingent upon the success of our three school districts, in Central Unified, in Fresno Unified, and in Clovis Unified. The better that each one of those school districts does, the better prepared our, our children are going to be to graduate from high school, go and receive technical training, go through a trades program that our trade unions provide here in our city, go to community college, or go straight to Fresno State. The better they do, the better that we're going to do. I think that Fresno Unified is taking some important steps forward. I got a great relationship with their superintendent. He believes in militant positivity, and because of that, the whole organization is transforming to meet the needs of, of a community of children that, a lot of these kids don't, they don't get a fair start at life. But Fresno Unified is providing comprehensive and wraparound services to help kids who have learning disabilities, kids who qualify for free and reduced lunch, which is 86% of Fresno Unified, and children who speak English as a second language. Hundreds of languages are spoken at Fresno Unified, and I think that they're taking important strides to improve the quality of their education. Clovis Unified is an award-winning school district. They are continuing to build on excellence. So the better that they do, the more that our community and the more that Clovis and the more that our region's going to be able to prosper. Central Unified, under Superintendent Oliverado, is doing an important job as well. Our job as city leaders is to be able to have an open dialogue with trustees and have an open dialogue with superintendents and provide any support that we can. And sometimes that means infrastructure, that means public safety near and around schools, and that also means tackling the homeless issue, because a lot of times you have folks that are camped out in parks adjacent to, to school sites. So we have to make sure that we are ready and can put together the resources, along with Fresno or Clovis or Central Unified's resources, to be able to tackle these important issues that, number one, are affecting the quality of our kids' educations, but number two, are affecting the safety of the neighborhoods around school, or school sites.
Tyler, is there something more proactive the city can do to help achieve the educational goals at Fresno and Clovis Unified?
Fresno Unified in particular has struggled a bit in the last decade, but I'm optimistic. I think that Bob Nelson has been doing a tremendous job as superintendent. I think some phenomenal women have just been recently elected to the school board, and I'm optimistic that they're going to help lead us in the right direction. But success in the school begins with success in home. It's hard for a child to do well in school when you have almost one in three people under the age of 18 living in the city of Fresno, living beneath the poverty line. When you have a high percentage of students that are food insecure, don't know when they're going to get their next meal, it's up to us as city council candidates and eventually city council members to make sure that families have what they need to thrive at home. And it's not until then that kids can begin to succeed in the school place. And it also comes down to collaboration. You know, I'm proud to have the endorsement of Hoover High trustee Claudia Casares. It's going to come down to collaboration with our school board trustees to make sure that they're getting the tools that they need and that we're also aware of what's going on in the schools. And we could do everything that we can to make sure that students succeed in Fresno and Clovis Unified.
All right, we've hit halftime of this District 4 forum, so we're going to learn a little bit more about our candidates away from all the political questions. So gentlemen, brief answers here. Nathan, do you own a rent?
I own my home proudly and have for a number of years here in East Central Fresno with my fantastic fiance, two beautiful cats, and one very interesting puppy.
Tyler, what about you?
I rent proudly. There's a lot of people in our city council district that cannot afford to put a down payment on a home. There's a lot of people that struggle to make it to the end of the month. I've been there myself. I live in a two-bedroom apartment. It's got everything I need. It's got a great view. Yeah, First and Bullard.
Have you ridden BRT or other public transportation in the city?
Yes, I have. Yeah.
How was it?
It could use some work. I'm not completely satisfied with the level of service that's been going on with BRT. I think that we could offer better infrastructure, especially when it comes to our express transit. A lot of folks riding the bus for free because the kiosks aren't working. A lot of buses stopping pretty close to the middle of an intersection, blocking traffic. I know we've all had that anxiety of being stuck behind a rapid transit bus in the middle of an intersection. And we also need to do our part to make sure that our BRT and our fax officers have the tools they need to make the buses safe. Because if people don't feel safe riding the bus, they're not going to ride it. But we have seen an increase in ridership over the last couple of years. We've helped make it more accessible to Fresno State and City College students, and I think we'll continue to do a better job going forward.
Nathan, have you ever had a chance to ride a BRT or fax?
Well, it's, I've got a personal story about it. So when I graduated from high school in 2010, I, I couldn't afford to buy a car at that time. So I wrote Route 28 and Route 45 to Fresno City College in order to be able to go to school. And it was a fantastic experience. But the challenges that the bus system had then and that they have now is the number of routes, the number of stops, and financially, our BRT system is run on the honor system, where you don't have to go up and pay your toll where the bus driver's at. You usually go and you pay your toll at the kiosk at each one of the BRT stops. And a lot of folks aren't doing that. So BRT isn't collecting the revenue that it should be, and it's, and it's hemorrhaging funding. And this is according to the Amalgamated Transit Unit, which is our, our city's bus drivers. I'm proud to have their support because they understand that, number one, we need to fix the routes, the stops, but also the way that we operate BRT in order for it to be a viable and, and prosperous bus service, and so that we can get more people to feel safe and secure in riding it.
Now, with all due respect to Taco Bell, which before the debate, we all agreed, good food, but what is your favorite District 4 restaurant? Not Taco Bell. Tyler?
Sabari, First and Bullard. One of the worst things that ever happened to me is for me to move right next door to the best Thai restaurant in Fresno. I'm three minutes' walking distance from it. I've gone there more times than I could count.
Nathan, what's your go-to District 4 restaurant?
For breakfast, it is going to be The Train Depot, jalapeno bacon and eggs. For lunch, it's going to be Dog House Grill. And for dinner, it's Tacos at Bayarta.
All right. Now, let's get back into the more relevant questions. Both of you will be vying to replace Paul Capriolio, who is termed out. Nathan, what separates you from Paul Capriolio? What will you do different?
I think that it starts with a very meticulous and detailed approach. And then it also starts with a change in circumstances. When Paul came in to, to represent District 4 in his first year-long stint, because he came in to, to take in a part of Larry Westrow, the former council member before Paul's term, the city was going through financial crisis. That bled into Paul's term as a council member from about 2012 up until the city got a little more financially stable in 2016. We're going to be in different circumstances now. I, I think that I take a different approach than Paul does when it comes to infrastructure. There is nothing more horrifying than walking a neighborhood and neighbors who are in their 70s, 80s, and 90s telling you that they haven't seen a repave or resell of their street for 40, 50 years, that they've never seen the city of Fresno come out and work on that. I'm a person who believes in being pretty accessible, so I give out my cellphone number. I'm accessible always on social media. I think that if any of the folks who are watching this now follow me on social media, I post a lot and I interact with you a lot. So that's something that I'm a little bit different on. The other thing is, I think it's life experience. My family doesn't have the luxury of saying that we've been in any one place for, for a whole, for a whole long time. We're an immigrant family. We worked out in the fields, picking melons, pruning orchards, and doing other field work. And so I, I think that when you've had to chase after the American dream, and you've had to chase after making it by paycheck after paycheck, and you've been able to, to be successful, it is important that you take that experience and use it to, number one, be empathetic to the needs of others. Number two, being able to relate to what they're struggling with. And number three, put together an action plan that can realistically help lift a lot of our neighbors out of poverty. I think I bring that, a little, a little more unique perspective that perhaps Paul didn't have. I'm also, well, I've had an opportunity to work in the private, public, and nonprofit sectors. So I've been blessed with a whole lot of opportunities to look at how decisions affect our community in those three different facets. So it's a diversity of experience, a different background, and then a very accessible and detailed approach.
Tyler, what makes you different than Paul Capriolio?
I think that council member Capriolio has done a tremendous job at working alongside Fresno State. He goes to all, pretty much all the football games from what I could see. He's very involved with student activity. And as a council member, I'll do the same, if not more. I'll go to games, continue to do so. I will go to debates, forums, marches, protests, barbecues, clubs. I'll go talk to students. But I think that we have to recognize that Fresno City Council District 4 revolves a little bit more around just Paul's precinct and the Fresno State campus precinct. One of the things that I want to bring to the cable is attentiveness to our district. Our district wants somebody that is not asleep at the wheel and knows what's going on throughout the district. I think if that were the case, we would be building a park on Shields and Temperance right now. I think we wouldn't have potholes larger than the size of my head. We wouldn't have streets that have gone unpaved in my lifetime. We wouldn't have homeless encampments out of all, all of our parks. As a council member, I will continue to walk precincts every single year. I'll hold regular town hall meetings, which is something I think we've also been lacking in, and I'll stay engaged with the community. And that's something that I try to do right now. I give every single person my cellphone number because if there's an issue, I don't want you to do the run-around with city hall. I want you to call me directly. My cellphone number is 907-4263. Call me. Text me. Please don't prank call me. I want to be here for you.
But wait till 8:30 to call me.
Totally.
Nathan, not necessarily the first, but what is the most important piece of legislation you plan to introduce in 2021?
I think it centers around infrastructure. We need to do a better job as a city of helping bring some of our dollars home. We pay a disproportionate amount compared to other parts of the state when it comes to the gas tax. So we need to make sure that we are working collaboratively with our state legislators and with the administration in Sacramento in bringing a lot of these dollars home. Because when we have our local dollars levered with our state dollars, levered with Department of Transportation dollars, we're going to be able to repave streets, redo sidewalks, take care of it. An enormous amount of tree issues, provide adequate lighting in pretty dark neighborhoods throughout our district in a much faster way than we would with the trajectory that we've been following over the course of the last decade. So mine is going to be centered around infrastructure because it is a glaring need that affects the quality of life of every man, woman, and child in our district, and affects their safety, affects the integrity of, of their neighborhood. So mine's going to be infrastructure because it's what I've heard at the door, and it's something that my neighbors look outside, outside of their door every day, and they can point at what the issue is. It's a bump sidewalk. It's a tree that's damaging their, their property line or is damaging their plumbing, and it's going to necessitate a fix that they can't afford to make. It's lights that is making their neighborhood dark. So infrastructure for me.
Tyler, the most important piece of legislation you'll introduce in 2021?
I'm going to focus a lot more on being smart with money, particularly where we get it from. District 4, vast majority working-class family, working on working-class wages. We have to start being smart about where a lot of our money is coming from. I think our current administration only has a single grant rider. Every single year, everybody in this room, we pay federal and state taxes. And a lot of those taxes go towards grant programs that cities like San Francisco and Los Angeles are getting. And the city of Fresno is not collecting any of those tax dollars that we're already paying into. So I want to introduce legislation that's going to help us collect more money from both the state and the federal levels, so we have more money. We're not increasing taxes. We're using tax dollars we've already paid into. And we're using that to fund local infrastructure projects, homeless shelters, and to clean up our parks, hire more officers, and more firefighters.
Right, Granite Park in the heart of District 4. I went through an audit last year, and the results were a little controversial. So what do you think of that audit? And there's also a threat of litigation based on the results of that audit. How should the city council handle that? Nathan Alonso?
I think we've got to look a little more closely at the audit. I don't know that the audit that we did was comprehensive. I know that, that Granite Park is an important piece of infrastructure and an important green space and attraction in District 4. Our goal as a city should be to ensure that we can keep it open. But our goal as a city should also be to see that it's running properly and that it is being run according to the specifications of the operations contract that was entered into between the vendor and the city of Fresno. So I think we need to look closely at, at the audit, and then we need to make some adjustments in order to make sure that that park is accessible to every resident of District 4, regardless of their ability to pay, and that we are ensuring that we don't take away a needed piece of green space and an attraction where teams come and play baseball or softball tournaments. I know that it's somewhere where I've played in softball tournaments. We've got to keep it open, but we've got to make sure that it's running correctly.
Tyler, was that audit fair, and what do you think the fallout might be?
One of the smartest people I've come across at city halls are city attorney Douglas Sloan, and he's on record saying that Granite Park is in compliance, and I'm inclined to trust the city attorney. If there's any mismanagement, I'll be the first person to come out and speak against it. But before the current investors went in there, that park was in disrepair. The city was losing money off of it. I think it's incumbent upon the city council member to make sure that our local parks have the resources they need to attract families and to keep up maintenance. So I'm inclined to believe our city attorney when he says that they are in compliance. I want to be an advocate for all the parks in our district, including Granite Park, and I won't shy away from looking closely at any future audits.
Tyler, your thoughts on marijuana business licenses? I know the city council is going through this whole process. Eventually, one day, two licenses will be available in District 4. Do you support the whole plan as is, and where should these businesses go?
One of my great disappointments, David, with the current administration is that you hear them time after time again saying that we need to increase our tax base here in the city of Fresno. Ostensibly, that's why they let Amazon and Ulta move in tax-free for 30 years. However, a few weeks ago, he vetoed a major piece of marijuana legislation to allow businesses to operate marijuana, recreational marijuana licenses in the city of Fresno. We need the tax base. The California voters have already spoken. I think it would be foolish of us to let this go untapped right now. People smoke marijuana, legal or not. The difference is, are they going to buy it out of county? Are those cities and those counties are going to profit off the taxes? Or are we going to be smart and do what all the other major cities are doing and open up businesses here in Fresno? I'm inclined to do the latter.
And where do you think that they should go, District 4?
Yeah. What I would like to do is I would like to put together a subcommittee of folks throughout the district. I don't want them near schools. I don't want them near parks. We have to be strategic about where we put them, and it's going to include community input from the district.
And quickly, yes or no, would you vote to override the mayor's veto?
Yes.
Nathan, your thought on where these marijuana business licenses should go in District 4?
I think that they need to be around areas where individuals who are going to participate in purchasing can easily access them. I am open to putting together and working together with my district, my district advisory committee in figuring out where the most appropriate place for those businesses is going to be. But every day that we're not, we're not operating in the cannabis industry is lost revenue. Not only that, but we're also pushing that business into the underground market and into a cash-based market that is, that is very present and prevalent in Fresno today. So whenever we're not taking a leadership approach as leaders at city hall and putting it above the table, it's going to continue to operate under the table, as it has been for a very long time here in Fresno. Yes, I would vote to override the mayor's veto and, and ensure that we're placing these businesses in a very thoughtful location where individuals that are going to shop there are able to easily access them, but also not putting our community at risk.
And just briefly, do either of you have any issues with the social equity component that has been discussed as part of these marijuana business licenses?
I'm in favor of the component.
Nathan?
I am very in favor of the component.
All right. As I mentioned before, GV Wire audience has emailed me some questions. Dylan wants to know, should public works projects be subject to public labor or project labor agreements, which some say help ensure that these plans, especially the airport is the most recent PLA, that they get built in time and on budget? Others say it adds to the cost. So Nathan, your thoughts on PLA for big public works projects?
So I was in support of the project labor agreement at the airport. I don't believe that you can take a cookie cutter approach to any piece of policy throughout the city of Fresno, because each situation that you're going to come across is going to be different. So I'm not going to sit here and tell you, I'm in favor of a citywide PLA on every project. Because, well, we live in a reality, and we also live in changing conditions economically here in the city of Fresno. So project labor agreements have the opportunity to recycle those dollars here with local contractors while providing a lot of individuals who have had a passive incarceration or have economic disadvantage with an opportunity for an education through pre-apprenticeships and the apprenticeship programs, and they can become journeymen and then work on a project for a local company here in their community. So it has the ability to create jobs here, has the ability to recycle dollars through, through local companies. And you're also doing business here locally, so it's, it's a triple win when you're looking at the airport situation. That's not always going to be the case. So we need to take a very judicious approach on how it is that we put together project labor agreements. And if, if we put them forward for our public, our public works projects, not every project is the same. Smaller projects may not necessitate or be appropriate for a project labor agreement. So it's not a cookie cutter approach.
Tyler, what do you think?
I have to agree with my opponent. It's not a cookie cutter approach. You have to take it case by case, project by project. And I've told that to the different labor groups that I've spoken with. On the whole, PLAs are great. They offer an efficient job, both when it comes to time and when it comes to the budget, and they create local jobs. I, I shared a story a little earlier about somebody that I met that had been recently incarcerated, got out, didn't really have any future prospects, and was able to join an apprenticeship program and get involved with the local building trades. PLAs create local jobs, and that money goes back into our economy and helps fund further projects. I think they serve the community very well when it comes to local hires. You can include community benefit agreements where you're going to, you're going to hire local folks, minority businesses, to get a seat at the table, and they get the job done on time and on budget.
Now, what kind of incentives should the city offer to bring in more companies, kind of like Ulta and Amazon they did, but those weren't without controversy? So should the city be offering incentives, and what should they look like? And we'll start with Nathan.
Well, I'm not going to sit here and badmouth what was a big effort by our Fresno Economic Development Corporation, our leaders at city hall, council members on both sides of the aisle that helped bring Amazon and Ulta to the community. Today, there are thousands of jobs being created by both of those companies. There are individuals who, you've got two members of a household working at either one of these sites, and they are able to afford to buy a home here in the city of Fresno. We are not in a position as a city to start turning away jobs, especially not when they start at $18 an hour and individuals can work their way up through management. After being at Ulta or Amazon for a year, there's tuition reimbursement programs. There's benefits that are offered, a retirement package. These are good jobs, and they are helping to transform the lives of a lot of people in our community that were underemployed or unemployed, and they are helping to grow our city's general fund, and they are helping to add economically to, to Fresno. These individuals are now able to pay their bills. They're able to buy a home. They're shopping in local stores, eating at local restaurants. Their children are going to local schools. And we're able to keep these individuals here and working in the city of Fresno instead of losing folks to other communities or them taking jobs in, in other cities. So I think overall, Amazon and Ulta, when you look at it for, in detail, have been very positive economically for the city of Fresno.
Tyler, should the city forego some tax revenue upfront? Tyler, should the city forego some tax revenue upfront in order to bring these higher-paying jobs, as Nathan's saying?
I believe we gave too much away with this Amazon and Ulta deal. I think that these tools are available to us for a reason, and that's to attract businesses. But I think we have to look at how much we're giving away for these businesses to come here. We have Amazon and Ulta move into a very impacted part of our town where there's a lot of pollutants released already. And they're not paying a cent in property tax or sales tax for three decades. And what I want to know is why, in that contract, there's no stipulation saying those jobs, or a certain amount of those jobs, must be required to be Fresno residents. Right now, there's folks coming from different cities, different towns to work at those jobs, and they take those dollars back to their town, and they spend them there and not here in the city of Fresno. I think that we should be using some more of these incentives for local businesses, for mom-and-pop shops, for startups. That's where most of our economy is driven from. But we've tended to neglect those folks and let them fall behind. So I think those tools are helpful. I think we have to be smarter about how we use them. And I think we really need to start supporting local businesses more with those same incentives.
Now, Tyler, we'll stick with you on this one. Maybe in the four years or the eight years you're in office, maybe we'll see High-Speed Rail finally come into Fresno. And if and when that does, it's going to connect the Central Valley to Silicon Valley. How is the city going to prepare for when that happens, when somebody works their six-figure job in the Silicon Valley and then comes here and lives here in Fresno? How's the city going to prepare for all the benefits and problems that's going to bring?
I'm optimistic. We have some really smart minds working on the High-Speed Rail, like my friend, former supervisor, Henry Perea. But we really need to start getting serious about investing in downtown Fresno. If we're going to expect an influx of people from the Bay or Los Angeles, whether it's in my lifetime or not, we have to start preparing today. We have to start making sure that we have hotel space available, that we have more housing available, that we have more mixed-use development in the downtown area. Right now, downtown is neglected. We need to bring more dollars into downtown, and we're currently working on some proposals at City Hall to do that right now through things like EIFDs and CRIAs, which help increase the tax base for funding low-income areas of town.
Nathan, with the influx of these Silicon Valley millionaires buying a house in Fresno, could that affect housing prices and, or prices, and what will the city do to get ahead of that?
So it definitely will affect property values on the commercial and the residential end. So what we need to do in order to be able to prepare for that is increase our housing stock. One of the biggest issues that Fresno currently has right now is that we have an inadequate housing stock in single-family, multifamily, affordable, and market rate. What we're seeing now, because of some of the policy decisions and some of the plans that the city of Fresno has put forth over the course of the last five, six, seven years, is that folks are now looking to build communities, and now they're looking to move retail and commercial to Clovis, to Madera County. Madera County has had exponential growth in just the last five years. Tesoro Viejo and Riverstone are huge communities now, and you're getting a lot of Fresno's middle class that's moving north of the river, out of the county and out of the city. So we need to ensure that we are editing and looking at our general plan as far as residential development goes to make sure that we're keeping our residents here in a home that they like and that they can afford, so that they can spend their tax dollars, and we can collect the property taxes, the sales taxes that come along with folks living, working, and thriving here in the city of Fresno. So we need to expand our housing stock to, to be able to accommodate for what is going to be exponential growth if the High-Speed Rail is constructed, is constructed and is, and we get the basin-to-basin connectivity that, that was originally intended. So we need the available housing stock. We need to make sure that we have the educational institutions and the job training workforce available to take advantage of what is going to be an economy of the future. So we need to incentivize and invest in logistics industry, in tech, and in other things in order to diversify our economy, preparing for the Fresno of tomorrow. We'll be able to, in those instances, insulate ourselves a little bit more from the booms and busts that we see economically because we are right now a mostly agrarian region. So we need to make sure that we are preparing for the Fresno of tomorrow by investing in how we're developing homes, businesses, and the kind of jobs that we're going to have here. Has to be a thoughtful and comprehensive approach.
Now, Nathan, speaking of the Fresno of today, tomorrow, and yesterday, should the city engage more policies to protect the immigrant community?
I think that we need to engage in policies to affect folks regardless of, of their, of their background and regardless of, of economically where they're at. We're all one Fresno. We are all, we're all in this together, and when everybody in Fresno is doing better and thriving, we're going to be a healthier city.
Tyler, should the city take more proactive steps?
Absolutely. This city was founded by large part immigrants. A large part of our population is currently immigrants. When I used to work for Fresno County probation, I was a victim advocate. I worked with victims of domestic violence, helped navigate them through the court system. It's something that happened right around the end of 2016. A large part of my clients were Latina. I'd say probably 90%. These are folks that were abused or beaten at home, and they come to us for services. Once the city started taking a very anti-immigrant rhetoric, people stopped coming in for services. That doesn't help the victims of crime. That only helps to serve the perpetuators of crime. People are scared to go to court. They're scared to go to the police. We need to be more welcoming and have a more open-arm approach to our immigrant population.
All right, we've come to the time of the show where we're going to wrap up. So Nathan, tell us how people get ahold of you. Give us your elevator pitch, why you should be the District 4 Councilman.
Well, David, first of all, thank you for giving us an opportunity to, to talk about some of the important issues that are not only happening in our district but throughout our city. This debate and this race isn't really just about the District 4 of today. It's about the District 4 of tomorrow and the Fresno of tomorrow. Fresno's future is in our hands when we go to, to the ballot and we go vote March 3. I'm proud to be running, and I'm proud of my background as the child of immigrant parents who, myself, worked a backbreaking job out in the fields here in the Central Valley, who then had an opportunity to go to Fresno State and has had an opportunity to work in the private sector, in the public sector, and in the nonprofit sector. As your next city council member, I'm going to continue talking to each one of you in the neighborhoods. We're going to talk about how our infrastructure issues, how the homelessness crisis, and how the public safety crisis that we're having is affecting you and your family. We're going to work together to put together strategies that comprehensively tackle these issues so that they don't become a generational issue, so that they don't continue to affect and victimize the people that live in East Central Fresno. We're all in this thing together. I can't wait to use my experience and a bipartisan coalition of supporters, great organizations that are pushing our campaign forward together, and each one of you who is out in the neighborhoods. We all got to work together. We're going to move Fresno forward. And while we have a lot of challenges and we have a lot of issues, the thing that I come away with from this race and from this debate is hope. A hope in a better Fresno, and a hope in a better tomorrow for each one of the people that live in our neighborhoods. So I ask for each one of yours' consideration and for your support so that together we can move Fresno forward. Thank you.
Tyler, go ahead.
Thank you, David, for moderating this forum. Thank you to GB Wire. Thank you to CMAC and to Nathan for all making this forum happen this evening. Again, I'm extremely proud to have roots in District 4. My family's lived in the district for four generations. We absolutely love it. I'm very proud to be from District 4. But don't be fooled, our district has been on a steady decline for the better part of the last two decades. And frankly, it breaks my heart. I'll be frank with all of you tonight. I have not been endorsed by the Fresno establishment. A lot of the folks that you're used to seeing on TV every single night, and quite frankly, that's because I'm not the establishment candidate. I am a fresh face, and I'm looking for a fresh start in Fresno City Council District 4. I want families to be comfortable letting their children play out in the front yards unattended again, going to the local parks and not having to worry about stepping on syringes, driving to and from work and not worried about breaking your car's axles on a pothole. And if folks want to reach me, I want to be the most attentive and responsive council member you've ever had. Again, my cellphone number, 907-4263. My family has faced a lot of the struggles in District 4, whether it's poverty, homelessness, or substance abuse that still exist today. I'm the only candidate up here that has public safety experience. I've worked in juvenile criminal court, Fresno County probation, Fresno Police Department as a crime scene investigator, and I'm the only candidate up here that has City Hall experience. I've assisted in passing a $1.1 billion budget, passing legislation to uplift central Fresno families. And I'm the only candidate up here that's going to live up to the promises made up here on the stage today. So thank you again.
Tyler Maxwell, Nathan Alonso, Josh Akach, good job. I want to thank the folks here at CMAC for putting everything together. Remember, the election is March 3, and ballots are going to be mailed to you starting February 3. And you can turn them in, make it so easy. You don't even need a stamp, and you can mail them back. So please vote for one of these guys, Tyler or Nathan, but please just vote. I'm David Tell. Good night.